Motion to accept the Senator and the man.
One second, that motion?
Okay. The next board of selectmen meeting will be November 12th at 2018 at 5:30 right here. And in other good news, I'd like to present to you all Christine Folland, our new town administrator.
Very funny.
Welcome. Who took her over to office this morning and went straight to work. Also, I hope you have a chance to notice that the front lawn is clean. A handy, handy cleanup crew headed by our office staff did a cleanup on Sunday and it's awesome. And thank them. And who else was there?
The Andreessen family and Catherine Powers.
Small but mighty, and of course, our own David Hensley. Thanks, and it really looks good. Are there citizens comments? And, alright, so let's go to the reports. First up, library committee. Who would like to present for the library committee? It's wonderful that you're all here.
I have a little presentation, if that's okay?
Oh, it's great.
Our committee was charged to discover if other libraries in this area could provide the services of patent-free library at a better rate. We also were given a list of questions to PFL. We decided Thompson Public Library was too far away and did not fit with our community. Margaret Taughton and I, I'm Catherine Jacobs, by the way, met with Liz Doucette, Director of Curtis Memorial Library. She told us that the rate per cardholder would be $75 and that the per capita information charge would be over $56. She also did not have the same enthusiasm for youth programming as Leslie Dullinger and PFL. Leslie Maria Morris answered the list of questions you asked and gave us more documentation to demonstrate that the $60 per cardholder or the per capita rate of just over $17 is a bargain. Our committee feels that a library is vital to our community. We have that kind of a relationship with Bath and Patent Free Library. The enthusiasm for young people and its dedication to lifelong learning for all ages was important to us. As a member of the Board of PFL and a volunteer, I have witnessed the concern for physical responsibility demonstrated by the library and its board. Mr. Oscarret, this is Peter, I'll say it that way. You were appointed to be a member of the Board as the Town Representative, and I personally am disappointed that you didn't attend more of the meetings because I felt that this would have been a perfect chance for you to learn more about how the library is run. We feel that an informed committee is a healthy community. PFL is one of the tools to make that happen.
Well, speaking of my defense, I was not aware that I was a member of the committee.
You came to two board meetings and then...
I came to one board.
Well, they said you came to two.
That was the kickoff meeting.
And you were given a chance to be part of the Board for a year and you could have learned all these kinds of things from them at the time. You could have asked all these questions and learned a lot more about how a library is run. And I was just quite disappointed you didn't continue with that.
Miscommunication, I apologize. My error, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you for your work. Thank you very much. And we appreciate your input and the hours that we've put in to answer the questions.
Yes, our committee worked very good and worked very hard.
Thank you.
Question.
Yes.
Was it unanimous?
Very much so.
And you thought there was a good relationship between any kind of questions you had with the library staff?
They're very open to answer all our questions and would have answered more if we had them. They're very supportive of the community.
Just a curiosity thing was, did you find out, this is going back in forty years, the number of cardholders, inactive cardholders?
Right now, for Bath is 679.
With West Bath?
Sorry, West Bath. There's 679, up from 631 at the last stop.
For the current year?
Yes.
We'd like to add, though, that it's almost irrelevant how many cardholders there are in the different communities that we looked at as to how they do their, how they would charge us. West Bath, so it's not, it doesn't matter how many cardholders you have as far as the pricing or whether it's a good value.
No, that wasn't the point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The point was just, that's been brought up a number of times over the years, that the number of cardholders is not correct.
The doubt.
So that's what I wanted to just say. You had a good number.
It's over $100,000 for the town to affiliate with the Curtis Memorial Library, whereas we pay slightly over $30,000 a year to be affiliated with the Bath one. And because of its proximity, it's half the distance from the Town Hall to the Bath Library as it is to Curtis Memorial. And so many of our children attend the schools in Bath itself. And they can get there right from the high school, they can walk over in the afternoon. And the routine programs are really something, I just didn't know about these. And what they're trying to do to keep our children learning and engaged is fabulous. And I think it's just a valuable resource. Who would have known until we researched and just don't know these things?
Green, how do you handle that?
Yes, I wanted to respond to your earlier question, David, about PFL being forthcoming with information. I met with Leslie and she supplied me with considerable supporting documentation, which the selectmen have copies of in their packets that we've provided them. She was very transparent with fiscal records, historical records, and that's all provided.
Well, I would say you, your committee did the homework and I thank you for that.
And I also want to emphasize that the per capita rate that they charge West Bath is the same rate that they charge all the communities in our district. It's an even rate per capita, but as you have more cardholders and more citizens, it does increase in your community each year.
Citizens, if you have the non-cardholders, yes, it's on per capita.
It's a little confusing, but it's by the town population, not cardholders.
It's per capita. If we paid by cardholder, that fee would go up considerably.
Thank you.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you for your work, I appreciate it.
Any more comments? Because you worked hard, you should have your say.
Oh, I just hope you accept a report.
I think the simplest thing is frequently it's money that is the issue in any town when you look at, you go to town meeting, you want to, can I save money on this item? And right up, right up front, real quick, we went to Curtis and it was, even if it was just by cardholders, it was going to be over $40,000. So the cheapest is patent-free. Alone it'd be a good service.
And we did, you know, there were some other questions and these ladies did all the research, question. So it was fascinating to examine and to think about setting up our own library, such as Phippsburg did. And when you start looking, you know, at the, you need the infrastructure and you need employees and you need, you know, it just was overwhelming from the beginning. We don't have the population I think to support.
A library really isn't just books. It's all kinds of digital resources plus the kinds of programming that the library provides. It's lots, many, many things.
I realize that if we withdrew from the patent-free, we'd have to take our historic archives out of there. Because they're storing our archives for us.
Yes, that...
And the other libraries don't offer that service.
Right, and that, it would mean that the archives would need to go to Augusta, to the state, to the state library.
The other thing we thought was, the budget for the school is 3.2 million. And we thought for 30, what's it, like 34,000, that was educating, you know, from grade, I mean, from cradle to grave. So we thought that was a bargain price.
Well...
Well, I would say the town has never turned it down, let's put it that way. It's always passed at a town meeting.
And with the questions asked and answered, then perhaps it's put to bed.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What are the next steps for you as a board in terms of the library?
I don't know that we... I don't know that we had anticipated what the next step would be, given this report. I would imagine that...
Probably we just maintain full speed ahead.
That come budget time, the librarian would come and say what the request is. And I'm fairly certain that the town meeting would say, we need a library, let's do it.
This might be a good report to share with the townspeople before the town meeting, so some of those questions can be answered prior to.
Yes.
So there's always tons of questions with never any answers, and I think that's the main reason that we wanted to do this. We're always voting on things without knowing what we're voting on. So we make copies, a pile of copies, we take to town meeting and leave on the desk, right? Because even if you make it available before, a lot of people don't get it. They ask the question the day of town meeting.
Right, right.
Put this three posts on the town website?
I was wanting to say that this report, as well as the minutes from the meetings, are already posted on the town website.
So we can direct people to that?
Yeah, if anyone calls and has questions or, as they usually do, come in, we can direct them to that and certainly print off a copy if anyone wants.
Would it make any sense or would it be cost prohibitive to take this copy and include it in the bound annual report that goes out?
Or a summary, maybe?
And look into it, yeah.
Or maybe a summary.
Are the committees report without all the patent-free library documents that make up the 32 pages? I think the committee report is, what, three or four?
Three.
Three.
That we can do, yeah.
Yes, we don't need, we don't need the bylaws in our own report, so I think that's, that would be a wonderful way to get started.
And I think the other piece in speaking to the town meeting is you now have five citizens who have thoroughly researched this and could answer pretty much any question presented to us.
Yeah, that was kind of the point of...
That would be helpful.
Of organizing the committee in the first place to kind of get sort of...
Well, do you feel that you've had your questions answered?
Yeah, yes, absolutely. I think you've done a wonderful job.
The job has been well and...
It was taken very, very seriously. We really appreciate that because there's no way that a board of selectmen could ever wrong with these details that you guys have. There's just no way.
And this, your work here takes the place of a discussion in aisle six in Braddock Market, which is really raw information prior to this.
Well, shots, don't forget shots.
What's in aisle six?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will figure as many ways to disseminate the information as we can. And talk amongst yourselves and talk to your friends and neighbors as well. Good work, thank you.
I would say it's a curiosity of interest that just by happenstance, we also have two members of the Board who are here, too. So it's your committee plus two members of the Board.
Well, one of whom's a resident did not volunteer her time in Athens, the other four did, but...
And I'm also the president and representative of the Board.
And I'm a proper...
And it's, and I'll say at board meetings, it's never, ever been the flavor of the library, they've considered a Bath library. It's the library for this region, sadly enough, no longer Phippsburg, but...
Okay. The energy committee report is also...
Delaco?
The energy committee has been working.
There's not much...
Let's see.
There's not much new where it works. Waiting for a couple of companies to give back to us if they will conduct audits of the town buildings. So nothing really is new. You do have the report from the one company so far that said they would do it, they did the energy electrical only. They have a hard time finding anybody who will do the upbuilding and windows, insulation, heating. Checked with three so far, no, no, no. So I'm still working on that end of it as far as the building part.
Okay, so a work in progress.
And Steve Kellis is also using his knowledge and people on the board, they're going to try to find someone to do a building audit.
So that we can ascertain like, how to improve the...
The cost benefits, common sense, cost benefits of replacing windows or whatever, insulation. What we might save energy-wise. And so far, not much luck with that, but we'll keep trying to find some company to do that for us.
Thank you. And we also have Ruth Lawson Stoppes here, who is, I want to talk about a developing concern with improving lives in the community, particularly in the area of senior citizens. She asked for a few minutes to talk to us about what is happening and I said, you can do that.
Sure. So a, sort of a loose group of people have come together with a concern for the area. Again, sort of the patent-free library area, that would include Phippsburg. But, but thinking about, you know, what could we be doing to make the, be addressing the issues of people as they age a little bit better? That's not to say that anything is bad or that things are not done well, but what might be some things that could be done to make that a little bit better? We know that we're an old state, we know the population's old in all of our towns. And so there have been three public forums to start to address it, to see if people were interested in starting to come together. Last winter, there was one in which there was a wonderful speaker talking about data, demographics, state and federal policies. And then someone from AARP talking about the age-friendly communities concept. Then there, a couple of months later, there was another forum looking at what are some community, other communities around the state doing that are, that are addressing these issues? And what are some things that are happening in this area already? Comfortably Home, Out of Bath Housing is just a fantastic program. Georgetown, there's a group of people who had come together not too long before that to start to look at these issues in Georgetown. But we all know that we work together in lots of ways. We've all got our own community that we live in. But there's lots of ways in which we interact as a, as a region or whatever you'd want to call it. So at the end of the meeting, I then asked, are people interested in continuing to move forward with this? Or just have this be two interesting evenings? And there was great interest in moving forward. A somewhat loose, although gelling, steering committee has come together. And we quickly decided, as it seems to be the pattern too, but that what we needed was to have an, do an assessment and see what people saw their issues or needs to be, strengths, weaknesses, or whatever. And so over the summer, there was a group of us who met and worked hard on developing a survey that we have put together and would like to get out and have then the greatest response possible in this area from all of the towns in the area. And I'll give you a copy of that. I have written up for everyone. My printer at home is where this is coming from. That's a little bit annoying, it's a moment, but... So what we're looking to do right now is get this out, as I said, as far and wide as possible and get it back so that we can start to assess this. And we see over the winter is when we would be then analyzing the data from this. And then, in the spring, could start to decide, are there things that make sense to move forward with or not? And it'll be just interesting. I think it'll be interesting to the people from each of the towns to see, you know, what we have found. And will there be action from this or not, or what? I don't know. But there's a number of questions here, as you can see. And we have a return date on this, by December 1st. That's a little bit loose, but what we want most is to make sure that this information gets back. There's a Survey Monkey here that people can use, which would be great, because otherwise, we're going to be looking at some of us' entering data to see what this is. So I have a couple of asks from you folks for this. And one is, would you participate in helping to get this out as far and wide as possible to the people in West Bath? In Woolwich, they've sent it out with their tax bills. And actually, we've gotten a lot, a big response already. Many people have turned it into the Woolwich Town Office, I don't know how many people have done it online. And actually, a number of people in Woolwich have actually turned it into Bath City Call, too, which is fine. We don't really care where they go as long as we get that information back. So that's happened in Woolwich, they've sent it out with the tax bills. In Phippsburg and in Arusak, they, I've put together a, they're doing a cover letter with their tax bills, when those tax bills go out. And I've put together a paragraph or so to go in that, which has gone out in West Bath, I mean, Phippsburg. And that will be happening in Arusak, they're not at the point of having their tax bills go out yet. In addition to that, Phippsburg has put it on their town website. Arusak has already put it out to a community newsletter, they've got an electronic community newsletter. So it's happening in different ways and different places to the extent that whatever town can do that. Bath is not able to put it in with the tax bills, which would have been nice, but more so in Bath than, say, Phippsburg or Arusak. There's an awful lot of people who are living in rental property, wouldn't we get the response just from that? So we're looking at a variety of ways to get this out and then hopefully get the information back. We're beginning to look at getting to hairdressers, we're looking at getting it to, I don't know, lots of places, fairs. But certainly want to be working with the local towns also to see how you folks may be able to help with that. So as I said, in Phippsburg, they sent, they have the blurb on their, on their cover letter, they have it on their website, they have a PDF on their website, plus they have the Survey Monkey and whatever people want to do. And they have a few hard copies at their Town Hall if people wanted to come in and do that. So I'm wondering if you folks might be willing to participate in that manner. Certainly, when the data comes back in, we will make every bit of that available to you. I mean, that's the place where you'd be able to see, because one of the questions here is, how important or not important are library services and programs? But there's a lot here and you'd be able to have some of that information, or we'd give you all of the information for West Bath. So I have that ask. Another ask that I have or request is, it would be, we are, on the steering committee, we do not have anyone from West Bath. And it would be really great to have that voice from West Bath as we're starting to move forward and look at how we want to proceed in this area. So if you have anyone you can think of, anyone in this room, or, you know, ideally, you know, in some places, we have a select person, or city counselor. We have a select person from Woolwich, we have a city counselor from Bath. And then other places, it's maybe someone who's just really involved in the town, who's on the steering committee. So that's, that's what I have to ask. I'll also announce that the last Thursday in November, I got the actual date wrong when I talked to someone earlier today, so I'm not remembering the actual date, but the last Thursday in November, we will have yet another public forum. And there's a physician, geriatrician from the University of New England's Medical School, who will be coming to talk about, we'll have a better title for this, but it's the issues of social isolation and loneliness. And at this point, the Center for Disease Control in Atlanta sees issues of loneliness, particularly persistent loneliness. I mean, any of us could be lonely at any time, and it feels lousy, but some people are living this state of loneliness. And that's a significant public health or health threat to those people. So even if we just looked at it from that standpoint, it's of concern. So that will be a public forum, we'll be having that at the Patent Free Library on that Thursday night. But for right now, if you folks have an idea of someone who might be willing to participate in our steering meeting, we don't meet that often, but I think your voice for my staff is important. And if you could help in whatever way to get this out to people and encourage them to participate, that would be great.
Swear with.
Yeah, I'm sure we can do that. Trying to volunteer may be a little bit more difficult, but the last Thursday in November looks to be the 29th. Do you have a time?
Yeah, 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock at the Patent Free Library for anybody who would like to participate.
And I haven't publicly announced that yet, just because I'm meeting with people tomorrow to start to work on that, but it's no secret. But you're the first public persons, folks, to know. Is this on camera? Well, it's not supposed to be made.
I was just looking at this and wondering if a lot of issues with people who are aging is suicide and suicide risk. And nowhere is that mentioned on here. Wonder if that was one of your questions?
You know, we talked about that and mental health sort of issues and tried to think of how you could ask that sort of question best. And we felt that there was only so much, I mean, there's a lot of kinds of depth that we would have liked to have gotten into in this. And there's only so much you can get to with that. To ask people outright, you know, have you considered suicide, or has that been something in your thoughts? It's not something typically, apparently, where there's a, people will answer that on a survey, even if they're not signing it. It's not just something that they feel, but there may be other ways to get to it, there might be a little bit more digging.
We do that in some of our group homes with the elderly people and the response, the most response that we get from it, the elderly people. And it's significantly high, so I just think maybe we're missing something there.
I'll suggest that there's probably a lot of things we're missing. I mean, we really felt strongly that it needed to be two pages, one piece of paper. And that became frustrating because it was an awful lot that we would have liked to have had in here.
Yes, it's a good point.
But point well taken. And it doesn't mean that there can't be other ways to get to that. I would say as a follow-up to this, it's the intention that we will do focus groups and we'd like to do a focus group in each town because that's where we may be able to get another layer of information. So this doesn't do it all. And from that, then will be the analysis and a report of some sort. I tend to lean toward reports that are short and sweet and volume.
So, yes, I think we can, we can help get the survey around. Carly, can you add a...
Yeah, we can absolutely put that on the website and on Facebook. And Historical Society is getting ready to come out with their middle ground for the ball, which would be a perfect opportunity to have that as an insert. I think they would probably be agreeable to that.
Is that something you could be in touch with about or sharing?
Absolutely can, yes.
That would be terrific.
And I'll keep in contact with you as well.
And do you have tax bills going out soon?
Already going.
But we did get several back in our tax bills and I was very curious. They went out with another town's tax bill and hopefully came back with ours. So we have received many back.
You know, it's not necessarily a lot of rhyme or reason to like sometimes, right?
But we're collecting them and we can certainly have them available at the town. Turn them over.
Okay, okay.
You have more back than you thought?
Excuse me?
You have more back than you thought, service back.
Already, before they've even gone out here.
Very proactive.
And if, and you know, if it comes to it and people are wondering about it, I wouldn't, it's fine if they fill out a paper copy, but if they could go to the survey meeting instead, that would be really nice.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
What's the name of the steering committee?
Well, we, you know, one of the things that we, at our last meeting, started to do was try and figure out what our name is. It started out as Bath Area Livable Communities or whatever. And it was very clear, no one wants Bath in the name for the kinds of reasons, you know, that come up. So right now, we're sort of on Lower Kennebec River Livable Community Survey, but that could be changing.
Well, everything's mid-coast around here.
Well, then mid-coast, I mean, I stopped the discussion because it was getting to be... And it may be one that, you know, it's really sort of a complicated kind of discussion to have, but...
There was a lot, just around the edges, there was a lot of discussion. There was a lot, just around the edges, there was a lot of discussion.
Mm-hmm.
You would think that a name would be, what's in a name?
Right. So, you know, and it may be whatever name we come up with is not the name we stay with or whatever, but... Interestingly enough, at the steering committee the other night, as we were talking about this, two people from area towns, who we felt very strongly that it should not be Bath Area, in the end said, and I was the one who started by saying, well, we can't have Bath. We need to think of something else. Two of them said, okay, let's get over this, you know? Bath is what we're all sort of around. It should be Bath, not, let's just stop.
Good idea. Thank you.
Certainly. Okay.
I believe we're on to business item number one. Which is, having the privilege of sitting at the town manager's desk for a few weeks. This thing came across my email. And it said contractor certification training in erosion and sediment control practices. And I thought, huh, Steve Reno might be interested in that. So I sent an email and said, is this something that you should do? And the email came back from Tracy saying, is this something the town would pay for? And I think it's something that we should pay for. But that is just my opinion. It's $75.
I've been to the class twice. I got my certificate. So it would not do me any, but she did not realize that.
Okay, so then we don't have to do that.
I had to get certified to be able to walk in Shoreline, so.
Okay, that's what I thought, so.
So you have saved the town $75.
Thank you, because the warrant this night was very, very expensive. But $75, that would have put us closer to the police.
I'm glad they have, they're a little bit.
Thank you. All right, so that is easily dispensed with. That's a no. The next item is a question of rekeying the town hall. And this came up as we were discussing turnover and that we have new employees and old employees. And the question came up, how many keys are actually out with this building? And who has them?
I, I've put some thought into this, went back into the archives. And the last I remember, the last time we got new keys was a long time ago. It was also the time when the burner alarm combination was changed from 1901 to what it is now.
877455.
It was, it was a long time ago, but Rob Morris, he dispensed the keys on as-needed basis and recorded who has what. Now, where those records are, I don't know.
So when you gave out new keys, like to me, who recorded that? And you gave out new keys to someone like me, who recorded that?
I don't know. I have a feeling nobody did. So Ross probably sees that we've had a change of the guard, the administrator, and that probably now's a good time, many, to put new keys in and invalidate the ones that are out there and issue ones again on as-needed basis.
And document that.
And keep the documentation at the front desk.
Who's your security officer?
You are.
The town clerk who are used to hand out the keys. You did not throw that.
Yeah.
I, I remember I had a key when I was on planning board. And then when I got off the planning board, the town administrator requested me to turn the key over, because I had no need to be here, which is the way it should be. And I have a key now, but I don't know. I don't know. I have no idea.
Good time to change it.
Yeah.
Do we have a policy anywhere on who needs keys? I have never seen one. So perhaps Christine, you could, you could break yourself in here by developing a key policy.
I think the policy has been, if you had chair people, you had meetings here, they were assigned the key.
Yeah.
For the committees.
With a key log.
Yeah, the planning board currently does not have a key.
They don't?
The code enforcement officer, that's the man out. And in his absence, the treasurer.
Why don't you go with the code law, and then you know who comes in when they go?
Everybody having their own code.
Everybody having their own code?
Yeah.
Isn't that expensive?
That's what I use.
It doesn't get expensive.
Everybody has their own code.
Isn't that...
I think you need a security committee, Mr. Selectman.
Would you like to chair it?
I have a brain, Tim. It's my excuse I'm sticking.
That's okay, we...
But I'd be happy to be a member of it.
We do not discriminate at all. Yeah, yeah, looks like this is...
More interesting than we thought.
Yeah, needs to be looked into. Everybody with their own code to get in, that's not expensive to me.
So it'll be all one number, the same number, but everybody have their own number to put on either.
Just do it in the store. Everybody punches out their own number. It doesn't cost them, I think it costs them something like $100 a month for security. And that's it. The alarm goes off and nobody's here. They'll call, the call person typically, first to admin, town administrator, saying, you know, the alarm's going off.
All right, let's put together a...
All right, we'll put together a committee and figure out what we'll do about keeping the place secure. And how to very quickly turn off the alarm when you accidentally set it off and by the keypad.
As important as the contents in this building is, and it requires that we have a burner alarm, the fact that we can't account for the keys is just stupid.
Okay, so we will begin the process of forming a committee and make some decisions and about recommendations and figure out what the best thing to do is. Is that agreed? All right. Okay, the next item of business is a question of the location of records of the town. It has come to our attention that there was a trove of historical records that had been found in Homme and turned over to the Historical Committee, the Historical Society. And they went to, through the process of seeing what would be the best way to deal with these, and came back with a recommendation that they be housed at the Paton Free Library. When I learned this last week, I said, hmm, it seems to me that the town records should be kept in town. Since then, I've done some more research. The things that have been turned over according to this report that was given to us. Ledger Record Book Number One, from 3/1/1844 to 9/12/1855. Record Book Number Four, 4/15/1876 to 9/29/1921. Ledger Record Book Number Seven, miscellaneous records from 11/4/1921 to 7/12/1941. And there's also a note, notation of newspapers in deteriorating condition for the years 1860 to 1945, which include birth records, death records, marriage records, divorce records, town warrants, records and plans of roads, auditor reports, and school reports.
Question?
Yeah.
Do we know the whereabouts of Book Two, Three, Five?
Apparently, those are still among the missing.
They are, yeah.
So the Historical Society had gone through the effort of getting approval for storage at the history room at the Paton Free. And that comes through the state archives. We had a note also in this collection of this report from Dave Cheever, who's the main state archivist. And he points out very clearly that that vital records, towns, vital records remain the responsibility of the town clerk. And that the Paton Free cannot receive and preserve vital records. They remain the clerk's responsibility. So with this information in mind, I today have called the main state library. Because what I was interested in was having access to these records as well as providing for their preservation. Obviously, having been in the, probably somebody's basement or back shed. They're probably in fairly delicate conditions. Carrie Nelson has gone through the materials and she notes that she cleaned them where necessary, unfolded them, which is important, working with old paper. And she has sleeved them in archival safe sheet protectors, which is also important, and binders and boxes. What I would like to, what I would like to do is to have these records returned to the town of West Bath, where they will be stored in our current record-keeping facility. And then I would like to continue to explore with the main state library archives the process of having them digitized, where they would be online for everybody 24/7, as opposed to just five days a week in the afternoons at the Paton Free Library. And they can help us to have all of them preserved. The main state library also accepts old town records for maintaining in their archives, where they would be protected. So I think what I would like to see is for those papers to be returned to the town and that the town engage in further exploration of how to best preserve the records and to make them available to the public.
And to confirm those records are in-house. Three, Six, and Five, the Historical Society did not have, we had those records.
Oh, we do.
We do have the full complement of original records.
That's, that's awesome.
One through. There might be one missing.
So...
Earl Woods.
So these, these three books, One, Book Four, and Book Seven, those are missing from our collection?
Correct.
Okay.
And now...
All right.
So if they come back here, then we can, then we can very intentionally take a look at preservation, digitization, and having them in an appropriate archive.
And did you say they're working on a price quote on that, or it's on a time?
I was just given the information this afternoon. And there's, there are a couple of different ways to do this. There are private companies. And the state also will hire an intern, somebody who's working toward being a professional archivist. And then the town would pay for that through the state. So that's where that is.
Do we need a motion for that?
I think a motion that, that requests that the, that the town records be returned to the town would be appropriate. And certainly all of the vital records, the birth records, death records, marriage records, divorce records, warrants and records and plans of roads. Couldn't that be good? It certainly need to be back here.
So moved then. And because it is very important, I don't know if we want to have an intern messing with this.
Oh, she, she's well-supervised. She or he would be well-supervised. I say she, because my daughter did that for Wesley College when she was there. They're well-supervised. And they have great materials. One of the things that having really good digitizing material machinery is that it really cleans up the paper. So you get a really clean copy, sometimes better than the original. Yes, Brittany?
As a former employee of the Library of Congress and the conservation and preservation director at, in Washington, D.C., I would just bring to the forefront the thought that once the word gets out that you found these collections in, there's going to be a lot of interest, and you might develop a policy on how to control access while they're in fragile condition. That's all. And I'm not volunteering for any community. You'd lose money to do that, and you're going to... So, but, you know, just, you might, you know, and that's good. I mean, if you want, if you want interest, that's good.
Yes. I particularly am interested in seeing those 1844 records. I want to know when my, when my house was first asked.
That's wrong.
He doesn't remember back then.
You want to protect the initial access until, and of course, you know, in the interest.
Yes.
It all had to do with the sidewalks, you know?
Yeah, it all started with the sidewalk. I second the motion. Okay, so we got a motion, we got a second, and this is important enough, so let's, let's vote. All those in favor of blessing return. So that is passed. Thank you. Okay, abatement. There's a... Ron, do you want to say something about...
Well, I can go through them if you would like, if you have questions. But I think there's three on personal property, four on real estate.
And these are all clerical error?
Yeah, two who were under the Betty Program. And when they come through, they go to the back door.
Okay.
The other one was a business that no longer exists. That's the personal property ones. It was, let's see, you've got one with that, I don't know.
Peter has one.
Okay, let me pick one up. Yeah, they're pretty, pretty simple. The personal property ones are pretty simple. Elstergill, Sanford Smith is the one that no longer exists. The business no longer exists. Elstergill, it should have been, what it was, it was charged twice. It was one more charge, I don't see it yet. But anyway, it was, it was not called Red Baker. Now, let's see, the other, Three, Four, Four, okay, Four. Dave Parrish, it was, he sold three acres. Only two got taken away from his account. And again, the back acre is the looking at. And that's the abatement, sixty-six dollars and sixty cents, that's one acre. James Drake, Joan Drake, um, they sold three acres, and unfortunately, it's one of the prime places in town. I, I rent that, is it? And that abatement come to 60273. And, yeah. Rick Farnum who built the new garage out on, uh, the Lumento Road. There's, apparently there is, and I remember now, there is two formulas for personal, uh, for commercial property. One of them is the state road and one of them is the Lumento Road and the Bosses Point Road, and the state road is a lot higher, and he got charged for the, for the state, state road. And that abatement is 3739. That's commercial property. And the last one, I wrote up quite a bit on this one. It's from Hoskins, uh, and that piece is up on West Spring Hill. And I sent, I gave you a copy also of the abatement request, uh, that they wanted. I had called the attorney, and the attorney said to somebody, "Keep me there," but, and the abatement come in federally. And, uh, but unfortunately, nobody could. And at the time, I think it was at that time, it was so much snow, I wasn't about to go look at it myself, but I told them I'd do it in the spring. And I did that in the spring. In between time, I had, uh, gone through the abatement and, and saw what they asked for, and I had wrote it up in the abatement, uh, form, if you guys got a copy of that. They, they asked for three years' back taxes, plus they could not, no way they could get that anyway. They asked for, uh, the eighty-nine thousand dollars. For the building to be reduced to nine thousand, um, three years' back taxes, they want to both get that. And, uh, when, when I went and, and assessed this this spring, we looked around it, Ellis took Ellis with him and looked around it, and we both agreed that, that the garage is so close to the road that it would be foolish to, uh, tear it down until somebody buys it because they've got a footprint for commercial law that's, I mean, very valuable. And I think the taxes on that loan was eighteen or nineteen dollars. I had reduced that to seventeen hundred. I reduced the house to thirty, thirty-three or something like that. Because Ellis thought that one pound of it was probably livable. Since then, they, they contacted me and they said that we need to take another look at it. And, because they, they felt, at least they genuinely felt that it was, it was totally unlivable. Anyway, very well may, may be, uh, the footprint is, is still crap out of it, and it's probably very close to the property line anyway. The ongoing thing with this particular piece of property is being, they've been taxed years for over an acre. There's a piece out back with an unknown owner that was attached to their account, and they were paying taxes on that. The other piece out closer to the road belonged to CMP, is that what they call it? Although, you know, it looks different because it doesn't look like the line runs straight through, runs at a triangle, one corner, and CMP does have the deed for that. And obviously, uh, looking at law, and that's where I, I stressed on the bottom of this, it's, it's an error, error in valuation, considered an error in valuation. And the, the, the only way you're going to get three years' back taxes is, uh, if, if it's something you don't own. So, basically, I probably should send this attorney a copy of this, but right now, uh, for what they're asking, a hundred thousand dollars off in valuation, it just is something I think needs to be denied.
Okay, so your recommendation is that this be denied?
Right. If they want to come back with, uh, a reasonable one, I'll wait until I look at it again in the spring if, if it just needs to really be, you know, torn down or whatever, and I think they may be right in this particular case.
So why do we need to wait till the spring? Why do we need to wait till the spring to relook at this?
Well, it's up to them to, to file the abatement that they want. I mean, when they filed a hundred thousand dollars for the abatement, that alone, without me even looking at it, would have, because of just what I said, uh, they, they wanted the, the bill is back, like ninety-six hundred and I think nineteen thousand for the law, and nineteen thousand for a commercial law is, is totally ridiculous.
So definitely, they could ask you to look at it sooner. Wait, they could ask you to go before the snow.
Yeah, so, yeah, right, that's right. I'd want to both to go if they have three feet of snow and try to find it. But I talked to somebody on the phone and I asked them, and I said, "We got this was before the snow, when the snow started to get down, can, can something that, that could..."
You've still read nothing else, so?
Well, I got a phone call from the, from the attorney, and he wanted to know what happened, and, uh, I said, "Well, it's a long story, uh, and I will write it up for you and give you a copy, but I guess I've got to take it to the select one and explain to them just what I've done with the abatement request." I reduced it this year, obviously the tax bill this year was based on what me and Ellis found up there in April.
Okay.
But the only thing that might come down a little bit more would be the house itself. But you figure seventeen hundred dollars for that garage, okay, I might not even take that, take that garage out.
So you're, you're recommending to deny this, this one, but to grant the other?
The other, right, right.
So we have an additional one here, don't we, on Cannon Financial Services?
That's, that's, that's the one, I don't have, personal property? That's the one that was under the Betty program too.
Okay.
I got two bills.
So, you're denying that one? And the recommendation is to deny all of the others?
No. Recommendation is to, to go...
To uphold.
To uphold all the others.
Yeah, and personal property ones that...
Okay.
Don't matter that much because, okay, I mean, uh...
So let's take, um, the property tax ones first. Do you want to do them, um, one at a time or...
Let's do them all together.
All together.
We can drag this out if you want.
I don't. I'm okay with doing them together.
We don't have the authority to do a hell of one anyways.
Well, acting on...
Well, no, we have the authority, we don't have to back around.
Acting on the recommendation of our assessing consultant, um, I, I would entertain a motion.
I move that, um, this, uh, Hoskin one, um, that we deny that abatement request.
Okay, so this one is denied, I think these aside for us to sign.
Second that.
I'll second that one. And, um, all those in favor of denying that? And what is your desire for the other property tax?
Okay.
Well, most of these say, say error.
So those, all the ones...
So how do we in the future, you may know this, I don't, I'm asking, are, how do we avoid, this is a lot of errors, how do we...
Well, I, I think basically, uh, the one with Jay Parish, obviously is a real small one. The, uh, one with, uh, uh... Drake is the biggest one.
Yes.
Farnum is, is, like I say, is, and when I looked at it, when they said, "Take a look at it," and I, and I looked at every commercial law on the road, and then I realized that, yeah, there's, there's down what they should be taxed with, with this abatement. Drake's, um, on deep water, that's probably the reason for it. And the law is being taxed pretty high on that they sold, so, uh, just, just a mistake that, uh, it never got taken out.
This is one if there's any procedures that were not doing this.
Well, this, this is what I found, it's kind of too bad because I know Julie checks it, and, and I usually go through and check everything before it goes to commitment. However, I was not here a week ago when it came to commitment, because that's one thing I always check is, I run, uh, my reports off on vision, and everything looked perfect from what I could see, knowing that, uh, a lot of times it's not perfect when it comes up on trail. And I think a lot of it had to do with, it does that every year, to do with the codes or whatever when they transfer it. I think if we had a full vision of, of, of trail, it would be much better, because I noticed that, uh, even lately, a lot of people have come in with their tax bills, and I've looked up the deed and the deed is, and then I look at it from vision, and the deed is probably three or four people back that own the property. And it's just not going through, it's not coming through.
It sounds like we definitely have a issue there. I think we aren't some looking into for sure if this is truly what's happening here. Absolutely.
I, I, I agree, I don't know, I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's just going to take a lot of time, and like it has every year, to go through it and match it up, because running my reports for vision is not, it's going to need answers.
So on your first day here, I think, from what you're hearing, there may be something that maybe you want to look into and assist us with?
Yeah, we need to look into it.
But, going forward...
We should look back to, well, the, to the months ago, there was discussion of the same issue?
In, uh, late, late winter, early spring?
Yeah. And there was, uh, certain procedures that had to be followed and to help alleviate this, like I saw.
Was that, I am asking the question, was that to properly bridge from vision to trail producing the bills? Is all other communities who do this do it instead of running two separate systems? Is that what you're making reference to?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, how would you like to dispose of the ones that are, um, our error?
I would really not like to.
But, yes. What should we do?
It's not the tax, it's, it's, it seems to be something on our end.
It's Hoskin one.
Right, right, so I make a motion that the remaining of these errors that we approve for the reduction, we need each one of them separately? We can list them in a minute, I think.
Yeah, we got Drake, we've got Farnum, we've got Parish, and we've got Wells Fargo, Bender, financial services, personal property, Bender's still, uh, Sanford Smith, yeah, that's the, that's, that's, we'll go down.
Yeah, okay, we'll do the personal property separately.
Which two are personal? Smith and what's the other?
Wells Fargo. And the one that you mentioned, Cannon, is it?
And, yeah.
Those three.
So that just gives us two, uh, Parish and Drake.
That is Drake and Farnum, would be the, would be the real estate. And, and the other one is going to be denied, um, Hoskins.
So go ahead.
So I make a motion that we reduce Farnum, Drake, and Parish.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so let's deal with the personal properties.
I made a motion, we reduce the personal property on Sanford Smith, Wells Fargo, and Cannon Financial Services.
Will you second?
I second the motion.
Okay, um, all in favor? Thank you, that's quite a pile of, uh, capable for this to sign.
Can we make part of this, this particular action, this Wells Fargo, can we correct spelling for that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we have to sign something, right?
Yeah, this is a whole slope, why don't we wait till we adjourn?
Okay.
So that we can get them all done without confusing ourselves.
Okay.
Okay, that takes care of the abatements.
I could say one more thing if you, if you'd like to say. I don't Julie, uh, look at, um, the, 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 but it seems funny, every year we have a lot of abatements, and because I was doing the, the assessment in both them for eight years, I don't think I've ever had more than three abatements a year. And that was the third we used, fifth or third. So there's, that's the problem, is it just when it comes over. And like I say, all, all, all the, what I run through, vision, everything was perfect before I went through, through school, but I would have checked every year anyway. It seemed funny.
So hopefully by the next time we set up the tax bills, that's something that we can address and, and figure out where the, the errors are happening and...
Well, you know, I mean, they set me up with, uh, like I said, they set me up with two, two different screens and everything I tested, went back and did it in, in, I drove two. But there's a lot of chaos in this town, and now, now you get to the point where, you know, even the deed references are coming, they're not coming across in, in trail or vision. And there's, you know, there's always a lot of, a lot of changes in vision, a lot of changes in this town.
Right, my thoughts, other channels are doing it, we need to do it, so we need to figure out where the issue is.
Yeah.
And, and correct that, we can't, we plan on this, so when we have all these abatements, one of these times is going to bite us, and it's going to bite us hard, so we need to figure out where the issue is, how to resolve it, and to move forward.
Yes.
I'm not blaming anybody.
No, no, I don't know, that's all...
And it could simply be the interface between trail and vision could not be working.
Yeah.
I would like to run through the process and see how it's being handled right now.
Yeah.
If you would be able to say next year, we have no tax abatement. This, whatever we think, that's really worked out.
Well, there will always be one or two, I think, anyway.
Right.
But, yeah, I, I would like to think that next year they will be healthy. That's it.
Absolutely, and it's just something we need to work on, and we can make-
I think, I think if I wasn't helped that whole week, I think that it wouldn't be that many days. Because I, I would always do a double check. From when I have the information, I guess, what, what come on Trio, myself.
Thank you, Ronnie.
You're welcome.
Okay, under other, um,
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, how did I miss that? Thank you. I got lost in my abatements.
It's all right, don't worry.
Um, one thing we need to do, um, we have traditionally had a, an appointment, um, for the Public Access Officer for, um, and that has traditionally been our town administrators, so, we have a motion to appoint Christine Holland as the Public Access Officer for the Town of West Bath, for a one-year term.
So who?
So who? All in favor? Thank you very much. Anytime. And the other appointment is to Antoinette Tate to serve on the Cemetery Committee. That we have a motion to that.
She also, I'm seeing here, she also wanted to be on the Budget Committee.
Oh, I missed that one, I'm sorry. Well, was, was, was her-
I don't have a cemetery.
They don't have a cemetery. Okay, so it's budget advisory, I, I made a mistake. Not all that unusual, but, so it's-
She doesn't want to serve on the Cemetery Committee?
Apparently, she wants to serve on both the Cemetery and the Budget.
Okay. Okay, so I've had two, and I crossed, and my mind crossed one.
Does the Budget Committee have a?
Does the Budget Committee have an open?
I believe we do, for Paula.
Right. Okay, so there is an opening on the Budget Committee, Budget Advisory Committee, and, um, and also for the Cemetery Committee. And she wishes to be on both. That's wonderful. So that would be an emotion for her to serve on both.
So who?
I second that.
Thank you, all in favor? The other, um,
Now we're on other.
Now, now we're on the other other. The other other, um, we need to authorize new signatories for the bank accounts. So, um, I don't know if it's hard, but who should be signatories on the bank accounts? Is the question, um.
Town Administrator and Chairman, and Treasurer.
My concern about the Chairman is that there is a possibility that I would not be reelected. And the election is the sixth of November.
All the fixes in here, and you reelect them.
Let's not, let's not say the fixes in.
No, no, but between now and November first, you're still gonna be a selectman.
Okay.
And checks still need to be written.
Well, all right, I will accept that.
And then, in, in the event that you get booted out of office,
But you could handle it.
We'll address it then.
Okay.
But I, I think Chairman, and Town Administrator, and Treasurer.
Those three signatories.
That's what I think, yeah.
All right, so I think we should have a motion to that. Unless there is some discussion.
And this is just checks, it's not warrants, right? Doesn't apply to warrants?
Well, it's for the check, for the accounts, and for the, um, for the, uh, to, to have authority on the investment accounts.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so the positions, the, the persons who occupy the position of Chair of the Select Board, Town Administrator, and the Town Treasurer.
Yeah.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
Sure.
All right.
I second that one.
All right, all those in favor of those appointments?
And other other, are we going to address Veterans Day, our next meeting?
We should, shouldn't we, thank you.
We've had another holiday.
But other other, um, here's, other other, I pulled it from a warrant, simply because it was such a big bill. I pulled from a warrant, the, um, bill for the remainder on the salt shed. Which comes to nine thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars, which we were withholding for the year, and the year is up since we received, um, since we, what's the official term for taking custody of a building?
Retainer.
Yeah, so, um, that, that retainer, um, is due, and, um, David Trask, who is our contractor, would enjoy being paid.
Hope he's gonna enjoy it, forget it.
So, uh, this, this is the statement, and it would be good to authorize that, yes, David?
Was this included in, in the article at the town, at town meeting?
I don't recall it.
It's, it's a holdback.
Yeah, well, it was held back on this-
I realize that, but did we, did we include it in an article at town meeting?
Probably, well, if it wasn't in the article at town meeting, it was in the, the contract that was voted on at town meeting.
I don't remember. It may have even been last year, not this current, year before.
Yeah, yeah, it may have been, because I don't remember, I said we're talking about the-
No, I don't either.
It might have been the year before that.
When they first proposed it.
Yes.
Three town meetings.
I would just be curious to make sure that, that money is in the account.
Yes.
Well, yeah, the, this is, let's say we author, I can't remember what the number is, let's say we authorize half a million dollars. What he's been paid is half a million dollars less ninety-two hundred dollars, so-
A percent, we authorized to, like, ten grand, oh, what would, what would need, right?
Yeah.
Thousand, two hundred.
Changes.
Yeah, all, all the money's been voted upon and approved, yeah.
And the, um,
This is just payment, actually.
Right, this was because of the, the changes during the contract.
That the cost there was up from that, that's withhold of the whole job.
Right. The, the cost went up in the process because of changes, is what I understood.
Well, you're wrong.
Is this one, is that, that's-
Because what happened is, any contact that you get, a big deal, they withhold the, on the final, the, the whole thing, two percent. So that, that's just in case you have any trouble with that building for the next year. You withhold that, so you can back that.
The, uh, They're testing whether they're in trouble.
I don't know, I haven't heard anything.
Oh, we thought we might have trouble, and we looked into it, and it turns out that we don't have any trouble. But we got the engineer and the contractor to have eyes on, and, uh, discussion. And it was resolved favorably. We thought we had a problem, but it turned out we didn't. Oh, it was good.
Yeah. It's very wonderful. So, um, so we, we should have a motion to, to authorize the payment of that.
I move that, uh, we authorize payment nine thousand two hundred and nineteen dollars payable to David P. Trask and Sun Inc., which is the balance of the money raised and appropriated, and amended, um, for the salt shed.
I second that motion.
All in favor? So there being no, um, pressing personnel issues, and given the lateness of the hour, shall we adjourn at this point?
Do we need to set another date for-
We do need to set, thank you. I'm forgetting who here we are.
I really don't want to come in on Veterans Day.
Are you Veterans Day?
Okay, so Veterans Day is-
Sunday.
They're dark.
Well,
They're dark.
And the second-
They're observing it on the twelve. The thirteenth is a planning meeting.
So, so the, the difficulty would be that we often, we would be occupying the same room at the same time, which would be somewhat difficult.
Why isn't it on the fifth, um, fifth?
That's the day before the election.
Not so good.
Why is that not good?
Are you?
It's just gonna be like, we thank for Peter setting up those, but I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm just pointing it out, it's the day before the election, we just affect Peter on that.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's okay.
Okay.
All right. So the number will be November fifth?
Five thirty.
At five thirty?
Right here.
Right here.
I also have some important, some questions.
You have some other?
Yes, some other.
Well then.
Uh, one, a guy, a contractor approached me, he wants to dig across the hill road.
He wants to do what?
Dig across the hill road and put it on a line and for sewage. So, I don't know if we have any policies, or if we should make a policy on digging up a road that we just put a hundred thousand dollars in.
What does he want to put in?
The place down, um, no coal, on the bottom down, we have a separate system by, she has usually super power, I'm not sure what it is now, but right across the, they do not get a separate system on that law, you know? So Jeremy Oath, I guess, is gonna sell her a piece of his land across the seat, the street, to put a separate system on, but they need to pump it underneath the hill road to get up there. And in order to do that, they need to dig up the hill road to get their line down.
Are we talking about the little house in the mud flats?
Yeah.
So they're gonna pump it uphill?
Could they not trench it? You know, do the, the mirror?
I think whatever he tries to do and, and does, I mean, you're looking at a face of ledge, right on the other side of the road. I think he, it's gonna be quite a project, uh, he's done both blasting the trench up through there. So I was waiting, just saying yes, I mean, because I said, we don't have, we don't have a procedure for that, which, the Town of West Bath, we need to get together without-
Is it, is this, uh, this is an existing house, what are they doing for a separate now?
I didn't have a tank.
Holy back, right?
So.
In a whole tank's legal?
Yeah, they've died for years. Had some issues.
So this is an elective thing? It's an elective thing, I'm gathering.
I'm not sure, I haven't gone into it that far, I can, I can, if you'd like me to, I could ask more questions. What I did ask him is if he could underwater and put sleeve in, instead of digging up our road.
So what we really need is policies and procedures, is someone digs up our road, what do they respond to?
Yes, exactly, I mean, we do have, uh, we have town water in the town, in places.
Very few places.
When you go to the city about, I'll explain yesterday, if I say we need to go put in a water line in the city of that, we have to go to water district, you get a street open permit, permit, the whole thing, plus seventy-five bucks. Then you go to the city bar, and you get another permit for opening up the road. Now, these permits are, are made for, okay, you damaged my road, you fix it. And also, the town gets money to hold on to it. So therefore, you could keep them reliable, so any road I dig up in that, I'm reliable for two years. If it settles, or anything else, that gets fixed. Right now, the Town of West Bath, as I can see, doesn't have any policies.
Yeah.
So therefore, I don't see what we have links stand on to tell Mr. Oath, or any contractor, that you can't dig up that road.
And if the town drew it, how can they dig on, on property that they don't own?
Requesting permission.
Yeah, we require the town's permission.
You can't dig on property you don't own.
Is, is the state requiring them to remove the holding?
That was my question, is this a-
That's questionable.
I didn't, I haven't heard of any of this, I'm not, I'm-
Well, let's, let's look into it when we start writing policy.
If they're required to-
Well, I might say write any policy, but I think we need to put a policy in to go in this.
Eventually.
We have nothing.
Yeah.
We have nothing to, on that.
Commissioner's, oh, I would think.
So, please, so we should, we should, uh,
Well, we say that the town's been here for all these years, and there's been no policy and procedures, not just the road commissioners, the town, it's the whole.
Right, yeah.
And it doesn't need to be terribly difficult.
No, it's, it's pretty simple.
Yeah, they need to restore it to its current condition.
That's why we have a town minister.
There needs to be a contract that they sign, and then if they don't restore it, then we have the right to assess.
Exactly, yeah.
Or it sells within a year.
Right, right.
Two years.
Three years.
I mean, because, I mean, we had people go through the town, put culverts in the town, and the town spent a lot of money this year just going back to shimming up these culverts that, that people weren't liable for.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to fix that one.
Yes.
So technically, the road commissioner is, does need to check on the road, but where does the hold and take issue, who checks into that?
I'm sure there's something to do, if they did, it's something to do with the state that's, we'd have to have our town administrator call in and, and see, or just ask Mr. Mr. Oath, what's, um, what's the reasoning for putting this across the road?
Yeah, they being required to do it, or for what?
Generally speaking, it's a code enforcement issue.
Did he sell that?
And I don't know if the code enforcement-
Jeremy sold that law.
Know that, like, so they had to-
The one you're talking about.
Yeah, but it's possible.
Maybe sold it to them.
That's what I'm thinking.
Maybe the first right here.
If they did, probably sold it to them. What's that just, um, for the, for the, that was just tripled.
Yeah.
I would think that for streets, open the traffic, and I could not give, I don't know, but, and it's just like,
Right.
I, I wanted to bet, and so I'm, I'm, yeah, I'd like to, so.
Yes, thank you.
And another thing that I've been getting asked a lot, and I'm getting a lot of phone calls on, is people's driveway culverts. I don't know, I'm not sure what our policy is, do we go and replace their entrance, no, but let's guard it out?
No, never.
No, see, I'm not, there's no toll, but I was told to do two or three of them, from our last town administrator, and I argued with him that why are we taking care of driveway culverts?
Is the land use ordinance silent on culverts?
It's always been a policy ever since I was a selectman, that if it's a DOT road, the DOT takes care of it, but we do not take care of it.
What if it's a town road?
It's town road, no.
Does it say that in the ordinance?
That's where it's been since nineteen ninety-three.
But this is twenty seventeen, and we don't have policies and procedures.
And more people can look into stuff like that, and, right, boom, hey, I'm dedicated to-
Looks like Brown paid to replace their own culvert.
Right, and, and that's what I've always told them, I, I-
And if it's not in there, maybe it's time we get it in.
Yeah.
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 So, I have had five or six meetings, and people get very mad at me and stuff, because I'm, I don't, I can't go replacing the culvert, I don't have that in my budget, you know?
Right, because you're not saying yes.
Well, I understand, I mean, I want something built, I don't, because I'm not, I'm not positive, because I would say that to people, and Adam would tell me to go replace it. And I did quite a few of those.
So let's, uh, let's find out what the ordinance says, and if it says whatever, um, then that's what we'll do, and-
I don't think the ordinance is specific enough to culvert maintenance.
And I'm sure we'll speak for Christine, but I think she's gonna need to impeach person, and maybe also some of the issues that you and her can hammer up, you know?
Well, I'd just like to have some guidelines to go by, you know? I, you know, I get to, like, say I have a subscriber, and he says, that, that's the road commissioner job. I don't, I'd never got handed that, I didn't even get a job description, though. So it's, what is the road commissioner job?
Yeah, it makes the job so much easier when you have written a policy to handle these situations.
Yeah. Last I knew, the road commissioner job was- Last, I knew the road commissioner's job was, and jobs are keeping, seeing what's going on with the sand and all that, and I hadn't even kept in school for it, so I really don't know what the road commissioner's job is.
Well then, let's get you a job description, we'll get the.
I mean, look in the, look in the employee manual, you'll find it.
Yeah, it's there.
Yeah, maybe you've not seen it, Steve, but it's there.
Oh, I've read that one that I had when I, when I took the first job off, and then a lot of things have gotten taken out of there, and with our last town minister, and it was.
So it may not be relevant to what you're currently doing.
Right, so I'd like to re, uh, values on what I supposed to be doing, but so.
We have a new broom.
Yeah.
She will sweep clean.
Yeah, that's just why I'm bringing it up, you know, so we get this thing fixed, and I'm not applying, I'm being told this stuff I was supposed to take care of, but I'm not.
And you're not doing things that she doesn't, what we should be doing, or.
Right.
So, um, we've, Christine has been taking a page of notes here, so I think we're all gonna get whipped into shape pretty soon.
Well, then, there's other, there's other issues.
Doesn't your father know that? He worked for Arthur for years.
Hey, what my father knew, John knew. I have a big deal with that, this is, this is.
Okay, so.
I do have one more.
Oh, okay, let's go.
Short, short, short.
But short and sweet, I have no idea what's going on with the land that we sold in West Bath, what's going on with our road, our maintenance, our catch reasons, uh, road entrances and everything else, but there's a hell of a lot of work going on up there.
You're talking about West Bath?
Yes.
Oh. There is a hell of a lot of work going on up there.
I know nothing about it, I don't know if they have the right place for the the road permit, I don't know, if another place, they start taking, digging up our road to hook onto the water, we're gonna have a mess there. So I'm just bringing it up, and if you wanna ask me questions or see how we're gonna take care of this, I'm well willing to help what some of the other towns do. But right now, we got a big can of worms going on up there, we have big trucks going up and down that road, running over the curbs, destroying all our stuff, that the town owns.
Once, uh, the deal with, that the landowner has with the contractor is, uh, once all the, once all the construction is completed, they're going to put, restore new road system after they're done moving all their equipment over.
We have this written, town of West Bath, is that just some word about?
You know, that's a deal, um, is between the contractor and the landowner.
So where's the town going, place of this, they can't just reconstruct that road to whatever they want to it?
It's my understanding they're gonna repair it, um, I don't, I don't know what the, um, if the town of West Bath is in the contract loop or not, I don't know.
I haven't been in any of them for that, that's why I just thought, I just hate to see.
Now, he, uh, he need a sweet deal with Crooker.
Yes, and he's, he's got a sweet deal going, but that's still the town of West Bath, which is gonna, there's a lot of property catching, but it's still I wrote, I wrote to maintain, I wrote to fix what does get messed up, but he makes a deal with Crooker or not, we need something in writing.
To cover us.
To cover our, by saying that these roads are gonna be put back in original conditions.
I don't know if we received anything in writing or not.
Okay, uh, we we can't, we, that's a very expensive road to fix up and repair up there, that we need to get something in writing by, um, the landowner.
My guess is we do have something, um, I've not, I've not privy to any of the conversations firsthand, so I don't know.
The only reason I ask is could nobody come to me and ask me about where we're going to put that, or what's going on, let's see how it's coming.
Is that mostly Adam who's taking the lead on that, or do we have somebody else?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, yeah, I think he did.
So is that documentation in the sale?
No, no, that's happened since the sale.
The side agreement?
That's happened since the sale.
The the agreement about the, the opportunity to be the recipient for all that blasting stuff from the high school site came after we did not own the industrial park, we still retain ownership of the road.
He's he's getting all his, uh, earthwork done for free and in exchange.
He not get out like a man at the town.
Crooker has a place to dump all the dirt that he has to haul out of the the, uh, Bath High School, you know, the massive.
Two hundred fifty thousand yards.
Yeah, it's like the Panama Canal.
So would this be something to check with the attorney?
Um, let's find it, find it, probably, um, probably the thing to do is call, call, um, Mr. Dodson.
Yeah. Find out what the deal is, and then, and then fix it.
Yeah.
Okay, and one more, quick, quick one.
Your town.
She told me to think of all the questions we've been, but that's what I'm doing. You guys not happy to see me? So the other one is, we do not have an eye contract that we plow that road.
Yeah, um.
No, we, no, we don't plow the road.
Right.
We don't plow the road.
Oh, somebody's gonna want that plowed now.
No, 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 no.
I did hear that one, that it was the landowner's responsibility, that he was gonna take care of it, so again, we're gonna need to find out if that's in writing.
Right, and find out, how long has he been taking care of that? I mean, that is a town road, he can just say what he's got.
No, it, there is, there is, there is language in the sale.
Yeah.
On the plow.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, good, that's, that's very good.
Yeah, but we didn't think about the road.
In the, in the sale agreement, now, all this stuff, all this stuff with the the equipment and the earthworks and all this stuff has happened since the sale, but the language in the sale excludes the roads and the maintenance and the this and the that, so it is addressed in the.
In the sale. Purpose of sale agreement. But I'm not sure about fixing the road after.
No, no, it, that fixing the road would not be in the purpose of sale agreement I just said.
Yeah, because we didn't know about it, right?
So that's due gonna be a si, a town road.
Yes, unfortunately.
You're not saying that's excluded from getting the path?
Correct.
Yeah.
Forever or for this thing?
We'd have to look in the, we'd have to look in the.
Okay, well, that's just something we might wanna look forward to.
Something I don't have off the top of my head.
For reaisel, your lifetime.
Any other?
Do you have, well, that could be tomorrow.
We have any other?
That's, I've, I've, I'll bring in some more next week.
It's present road in town, how's that?
It is the most.
And we only want to build two modern specifications.
Yes, and it's the only road in town that is done right, and I'd like to keep it right, and we got a lot of time and money invested in it, we're taking it big enough.
Nice guardrails, too.
Nice what?
Nice guardrails.
Yeah.
Road to nowhere.
Road to nowhere.
We can get a sign.
Yeah.
Isn't there a song?
Um, yes.
Build your own memorial.
Now, if we all did have a good site ahead of town, and the town's still owned that, we could have had it, one heck of a piece of land.
Well, I'm gonna just be pessimistic enough to say that had we still owned it, it never would have happened that they need, they'd have needed the place, because they couldn't have built the school, um, it was, it.
Just had to have that school.
Yeah.
So.
Eighty-three million dollars worth.
Six million dollar work, I mean, I'm, I'm sure they couldn't find another piece of land around out of West Bath, you know, cheaper, six million dollars just to level that top of it.
Are we ready to adjourn this?
It got us a.
I would agree.
By by exclamation, can we have a Veterans Day? Veterans Day, we're meeting on the fifth of November. Oh, well, I thought we were gonna celebrate Veterans. I made a motion that we adjourn. Okay, we're gonna celebrate Veterans Day.